Judy, you want to try to communicate with Lori and see if make sure the volume's okay?
Lori, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, Chris, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, thank you.
Is the volume good for you guys?
For me it is.
For me, it's a little bit echoing.
Okay, you need to turn your volume down. And try again.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yep.
I turned mine down too, to see if that helped. Does that help with the echo in as well?
We're not hearing an echo. I think it was on his end.
Actually, I could hear Lori clears the bell, but it's coming out of the room that's a little, a little bit echoey, I guess.
Okay, I think that we're ready to call the meeting of the Smith County Board of Supervisors to order. I'd like to welcome everyone in attendance. We have two board members that are attending through technological means. We have Chris Ratliff and Lori Deal who are attending remotely. And we'd also like to welcome those who are debuting online. Today, we will have our Fledgled Lieutenant Lisa Richardson, Assistant County Administrator. And then, we are pleased to be able to welcome Pastor Justin Hall, Archbishop Best, Church in Atkins, who will provide the indications for our media. Lisa? Do you want to place the hands? Place the hands.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, as I stand to pray for our elected officials, I am reminded that you call them your ministers, that you ordain government officials to execute justice and to ensure certain civil liberties. I pray for them as you commanded, that we as citizens might lead quiet and peaceable lives in all godliness and sincerity, undisturbed and unintruded. Father, I take encouragement tonight in knowing that their hearts are in your hand. And as you said, the heart of the King is in your hand, and you can turn it in any direction you want. And so I pray tonight that you would give them wisdom as they govern, as they legislate, as they execute, not as those who will give an account simply to constituents, but to those who will give an account to their Creator. Father, I commit this meeting to you, and I ask that you would be the overruler of everything that is done here. I pray for your blessing upon these officials and their families, and I pray, Lord, that you would give grace to Smith County and to all of its citizens, especially during this time. And I pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Next on the agenda, for the minutes, we have two different dates to approve. The first one is November 12, 2020. Are there any comments or revisions?
Two approvals.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Do we need to do roll call votes since we have been attending the vote?
I'm sorry?
Since we have two remotely, do we need to do roll call vote?
I don't know if I'm interrupting or not, but it would be a better handle.
Is the sound system not on?
I don't hear anything like being here working.
Test.
Oh, push the right button.
Okay.
I forgot to tell you that. I'm sorry.
So can we just do by hand?
You can do raise hands or roll call vote, either one.
Okay, well, all in favor? Can you hear now, Lori? I think we might need to do a roll call. The clerk will... We're approving the minutes for November 12, 2020. We have a motion and a second, and we're taking a vote. I think it might be better to do a roll call. Sean or Lisa, do you want to do that?
I will. Be happy to. Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Ms. Wyatt?
Yes.
Ms. Deal?
Yes.
Mr. Call?
Yes.
Okay, next, we have the minutes for the November 19, 2020 meeting. Do we have any comments or revisions? If not, do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. A roll call vote, please.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
I'm staying.
Dr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Ms. Wyatt?
Yes.
Ms. Deal?
Yes.
Mr. Call?
The motion passes unanimously. Next on the agenda is the financial report from Lisa Richardson.
Madam Chairman, I don't have a lot of information today just due to the Treasurer's Office not having their financial records prepared, you know, of course, due to the 19 and the shortage of staff and the issues that are going on there. So I don't have records from their office.
Okay.
I do, however, have an expenditure and revenue summary there for your review. And what's the part? Is the first one up expenditure, Kristy? The first one is an expenditure summary. You should have a copy there in front of you. And if you just refer to the last page, page five, it shows expenditures from July 1, 2020 to December 8, 2020. The current amount of expenditures is $3,852,354.96, with a year-to-date expended amount of $30,045,6132, with a remaining balance in the budget of $66,901.718.68. The next report you should have there is the revenue summary. This is revenue taken in from July 1, 2020 to today, December 8, 2020. The current amount for December is $11,243,441.99, with the year-to-date being $38,137,847.89, with a remaining $58,809.809.483.11 in the remaining budget. And that's all I have for the financial documents. We did receive those from the Treasurer's Office. I can make sure that you all receive a copy through these mail.
Thank you, Lisa. Do we have any questions or comments from the board? If not, we'll continue on. Next is the payment of invoices. And we have members of the board at your desk. The first appropriation is for the General County, in the amount of $1,800,000. I guess we'll do a roll call vote again, Sean.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Dr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Ms. Wyatt?
Yes.
Ms. Deal?
Yes.
Mr. Call?
Yes.
Next, we have the appropriation for Social Services, in the amount of $470,000. A motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Utter, if you do a roll call?
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Dr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Ms. Wyatt?
Yes.
Ms. Deal?
Yes.
Mr. Call?
Yes.
Next, we have the School Operating Fund. The total School Operating Fund is $3,915,000.
So move.
A motion? Is there a second?
Second.
A roll call vote, please.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
I'm staying.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Dr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Ms. Wyatt?
Yes.
Ms. Deal?
Yes.
Mr. Call?
Yes.
Next, we have the School Debt and Capital Outlay, in the amount of $1,500.
Move to approve, Madam Chairman.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
I'm staying.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Dr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Ms. Wyatt?
Yes.
Ms. Deal?
Yes.
Mr. Call?
Next, we have the Sheriff Department Fund 748, in the amount of $1,282.33.
Move to approve. Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Sorry, Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Dr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Ms. Wyatt?
Yes.
Ms. Deal?
Yes.
Mr. Call?
Yes.
Next, we have the Recovery Court Fund 749, in the amount of $177.23.
Move to approve. Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Dr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Ms. Wyatt?
Yes.
Ms. Deal?
Yes.
Mr. Call?
Yes.
Next, we have the Recovery Court Fund. Oh, I'm sorry. Next, we have the Fund 775, Broadband Care Fund, in the amount of $313,592.
Move to approve. Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Dr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Ms. Wyatt?
Yes.
Ms. Deal?
Yes.
Mr. Call?
Yes.
That completes the financial appropriation. Next on the agenda is Citizens Time. Does anyone sign up to speak? Thank you. Our first is Dr. Charles Wasson. Is it working?
I don't think it's on.
Heather?
Huh?
Is it? Heather will check it. I don't think it's on. This is all new tonight, so it's kind of our first experience with it.
Thank everyone for your patience.
Yes. It's on. It was on mute. Damn, it's up.
Just... Sorry.
Better than that mess could get you to smile when I say that.
Yeah, that one. Well, I don't know if it'll pick up through the sound system. That's just the recorder.
Again, we appreciate your patience. All the bugs worked out. Test. Charlie, you have a strong voice. Do you think it might carry without microphone?
Is it not going to get fixed?
I don't know.
Step back and use one of those.
That would be fine.
If you don't mind having your back there. Yeah, that's fine.
If you don't mind just putting, saying the address. Push the button. Yeah, there we go.
Okay. My name is Charles Wasson. I live in Wasona. I've been a resident of Marionoff and On for all my life. 321 Wasana Circle. But I was here last week, I mean, last meeting, when several people from JSEP spoke about what they want to do, and they had a resolution. I never did get a... I asked for a resolution, but I didn't what their resolution was that they presented, but I didn't get a copy until here recently, so I really haven't had time to think it through. But the resolution is a resolution for the constitutional right of unity and equality. That was what this group spoke about. I just wanted to say a few words and ask a few questions because I think... I just wanted to say a few words about the resolution and ask a few questions. I don't necessarily expect to get any answers tonight, but I guess my objective in being here is there's a lot I don't understand about the resolution because some of the phrasing is not accurate, and some of the words are not properly defined. Some of the sentences don't completely make sense to me. And I think it's a type of a resolution this group is asking you all to sign, which requires a little bit more thought and a little bit more study and getting the viewpoint of a lot of their people. The way, the copy that I have of the resolution, which was on page 47, that I have, attachment 10 of your packet, on page 47, you have the resolution here. And then down at the bottom is Judy Wyatt, Chair, Sean Utter, Clerk. On the agenda tonight, I didn't know whether this old business 3A or 3B, Unity Day Follow-up, I didn't know whether that's supposed to be voting on the resolution tonight or just discussing it or taking it from there. So, you know, I just wonder who... From the way the resolution looks, it looks like Judy Wyatt wrote it and Sean Utter tests that she wrote it, but I wonder who wrote it and if the board, the Smith County Board of Supervisors has read it, and if Judy signs it, Chairman Wyatt signs it, does that mean everybody agrees and that goes out as representative of all Smith County?
Sean, do you want to address some of this?
Yes, ma'am. So, I wrote it, and it's her, Ms. Wyatt's signature only occurs after the Board of Supervisors fully adopt the resolution. Ms. Wyatt, I'm talking to her today or yesterday, I did mess up by putting 8th of December, assuming it would be adopted tonight. It doesn't necessarily have to be adopted tonight. I did speak with several of the board members as we went through the drafting process and edited as we went. So this is certainly not the first, maybe even not the 10th rendition, but this is the one that we're looking at tonight.
Okay, well, thank you. I just, I know, I was here, Trayvon Brown spoke, and a number of other people spoke about it, but we never saw it. I do remember the question, one of the supervisors had Supervisor Stevenson. He asked about a pamphlet that they had passed around, and it didn't seem to, the unity part didn't seem to include really everybody. It didn't seem to include white males, as a matter of fact. Included everybody else of all sorts of persuasions and colors and whatnot, but it didn't include white males. Trayvon Brown seemed a little bit neutral on the subject, but one of the board members of JSEP said, "No, we have it written the way we want it, and we're not going to change it." So that was kind of a red flag for me, that, you know, kind of bothered me a little bit. I don't think it's a resolution that can be read over once or twice and then just signed because there's just too much in there, too much information that needs to be known. The other question I had, Mr. Brown talked about, and others had talked about, once they get resolutions from a lot of people in West Southwest Virginia, then they're going to send it to the state legislature to kind of create the appearance of popular support for legislation in Richmond, kind of like the police immunity thing. You know, if you get enough people out here calling for it, then legislature in Richmond, we're going to want to deal with it and pass it. As I read it and think about it, there's an underlying assumption that in Smith County and in Southwest Virginia, there is a big problem with racism. And it's just something that I don't see, experience, or feel. We have black people in our church. We have, this one black person in our church, he told, he said, "I'm a black racist. I don't like white people." But the resolution is a little bit squishy on whether we're talking about white racism or black racism. I've lived among black people in the Congo. I've lived among Haitians in Montreal and never had a problem. Always got along good, except when I went in certain areas in the city where we were in the Congo, people beat on your car and didn't treat you nice. So I mean, there's white racism, there's black racism. I just don't think there's that much of a problem that I've seen in Smith County. My son grew up, went through high school with one of the nicest families, the Purefoy family. Darren Purefoy was his best friend. Evelyn Lawrence, you couldn't ask for, you know, nicer people. Maybe they experienced racism, you know, I don't know, but it never came from me. And I know it probably never came from most people in Smith County. I think we've got a wonderful group of people here in Smith County, and to have to sign a resolution like this, it's kind of trying to put a guilt feeling on you. So, you know, what's the purpose of the resolution? Is it supposed to create a support for legislation in Richmond? So that's one question. Another one, what do they mean by unity, equality, collective prosperity, and justice? Those have different definitions according to your political persuasion. And you can go up and do a search on equality, and one of the searches is equality is kind of the core concept of socialism. So I don't think everybody in Smith County is a socialist. So I don't think they would relate that well to this, to this resolution. But these words can be put in, maybe some of you here have ever read Animal Farm, written by George Orwell. He wrote 1984. But in Animal Farm, you had a farmer, he was living high on hog. That's really the truth. He was living high on the hog because he had all the pigs out there doing his work and whatnot, and then he'd eat some. And as the pigs got pretty sad, mad, they wanted to revolt, so they said that we hate the farmer, we're going to overthrow him. They overthrew the farmer, and then a small group of pigs, after they'd overthrown him, they started living high on hog. And the other pigs said, "Hey, what's going on here? We thought we were getting justice when we overthrew the farmer." And they said, "Yeah, you are. The thing is, some pigs are more equal than other pigs." So that's kind of the take I take on some of these particular words here. One flaw that I see in the resolution, the resolution in support of the constitutional right of unity and equality. Well, the flaw in that is, in 1775-76, the American colonies declared their independence, and they wrote the Declaration of Independence, and they said, "We hold these truths to be self-evident, all men are created equal, that they're endowed by their Creator with certain inalienable rights." And then a few years later, they wrote the Constitution to protect those rights. You don't have any rights that come from the Constitution. Your rights come from God. The right to help, to keep you by our arms, that's a right that the government doesn't have anything to do with it. It doesn't come from the Constitution. It's there to protect your, the Constitution's there to protect that right. The Constitution of the State of Virginia, which every board member signs a pledge to uphold, support the Constitution of Virginia and the United States. The first clause in the Bill of Rights of the Constitution of Virginia addresses the equality issue. "All men are by nature equally free and independent and have certain inherent rights." So they are, we're equally free. We're born equally in God's eyes, and we should be treated equal by the law, is what they mean. But the equality that we hear a lot talked about today is not talking about that because we have got innumerable laws guaranteeing equality and non-discrimination. So I think there's, I had a kind of a problem with that. There are a number of other problems in the resolution, things that are hard to kind of understand. But I guess my closing comment would be, if any member of the Board of Supervisors wanted to sign this as an individual, hey, that's great. But to do it as a board, when there are all these questions that are out there in my mind and in the minds of other people, if they would read it, if they had read it, if they had a copy of it, if they'd ever seen it, if they ever known about it, I doubt if anybody in the county ever even knows about it, except people who, you know, follow this sort of stuff. So I'd say, you know, if you support it, get your own stationery, write your own name, and then give it to Trayvon Brown or whoever you want to. But as a Board of Supervisors, I don't think you have the authority to sign this as representing everybody in the county when nobody in the county has a copy of it, nobody in the county knows anything about it. What everybody in the county does know, or people that study it and read it, they know that you took an oath to obey the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of Virginia. That is your only duty in this county. But this resolution wants you to correct racism and all these other problems in the county, in the state, in the nation, and it just goes beyond your authority. So I think this could be reworked. Maybe this could be a public hearing or something like that, where some alternate resolutions could be offered, so you'd have something to choose. So that's, you know, that's pretty much...
Well, Dr. Wasson certainly makes some very valid and insightful comments, but Chris Albert...
Read your constitutions and it...
And Mr. Utter, it is a stamped draft, so I know it's a work in process.
Yes, ma'am.
And perhaps, you know, as we move through this process, we can get a little bit more refined with...
It is later in the agenda we can...
What the intent is. Thank you, Dr. Wasson. Next on the list for Citizens Time is the Patrol Rescue Squad.
Good evening, Lord. Just wanted to give you an update tonight. I'm sorry, this last meeting... I'm sorry, missed last meeting. Actually, I was here on Tuesday, didn't have a meeting, it was on Thursday. But I do have October's profit and loss report, type and approach. Right now, we are in the process, we have adopted a family to do my Christmas for, for the children, as we have done in the last three years. We're also involved with the shop for, shop with the first responder. That's going to be on December twelfth. That's a thing that Walmart does. And all the first responders, police, fire, UMS, and whatnot throughout the county get together. We're going to get together on December twelfth. We'll purchase, or we'll go through and shop for what the children want. This year's going to be a little different. Last year, we actually took the children around. This year, we're not. We will be going in, buying it, and then they'll drive through and give, you know, for due to social distancing. But we're really excited about being involved in that. I did it last year. Excuse me. We had a lot of fun doing it with the kids. This October, it's starting to show some of the hits we were, that I'd mentioned in months prior to this, with the COVID issues. Those calls from those months where our calls were down are starting to show up now. But the last two months, where your, or three months, excuse me, we're averaging over ninety calls a month. So, our calls are, have increased, so we'll start, in four or five months, we'll recoup from that. So, as you look at this.
About what percentage increases that from the average?
About thirty percent. We were running sixty to sixty-five calls and now we're running ninety. Last month, we ran eighty-nine. We transported sixty-two.
Is this due to COVID-related?
Yeah, yes, ma'am. Other than that, don't have a lot to bring forward to you, other than, of course, you guys know about the new truck. We've gone, have partnered with the town of Saltville. And I will find out either tonight or on the tenth, the exact amount of, of COVID money that they had to help us with. But we'll be purchasing a new monitor with that COVID money. And also possibly a Lucas device, I'm sorry, an autopulse, which is a CPR, a machine that wraps around you rather than the Lucas, which goes directly in your chest. We kind of liked it better because it's more compression, full compression. And also for people my size, the Lucas doesn't fit where the autopulse does. Well, hopefully, can be able to have enough left over to purchase one of those and maybe some more PPE equipment for the, for the squad. Last I heard on the, the amount was around thirty-five to forty thousand dollars, but we're not sure exactly. They were waiting on one more bill that they had to pay to let us know exactly how much they were going to be able to afford to give us. In saying that, I would like for the, sorry, I thought somebody said. In saying that, I would like for the board to consider, maybe in February, we're going to be doing a grant in February for a second monitor. So, I'd like to, for the board to consider helping with that and thinking about that for, from here to there. In maybe February, we'll, I'll come back and we'll talk more about it, but to help us purchase a second monitor. Right now, there, the quote I have is about twenty-nine thousand dollars and some change. Ballot has a eighty-twenty percent, eighty-twenty thing they're doing with us. So, it's only going to cost us twenty-four thousand and some change.
Mr. Ut, is that something that we get through our safety committee?
Which?
This request for.
We can do it either through the budget committee or through the public safety committee, either one.
The one thing I noticed is there is a little bit of a deficit on this statement.
Yes, ma'am.
And do you anticipate that that will be corrected maybe in the future?
Yes, it was already corrected somewhat in, in November. And we're going to run some months in a deficit, like this one here, the vehicle maintenance run us a lot more. When we are granting the new truck, that will cut down on vehicle maintenance severely. Because our vehicles are old right now. They're ten, eight, ten, and twelve years old. So, they're to require maintenance each month. This month just happened to be a bigger expense than normal. And also, for some reason, I'm not sure how things got turned around, but you see on the internet service and the telephone service, they were both paid for two months at a time, September and October. Right now, as of this past Tuesday, when we had our board meeting, we were right at sixty-seven thousand dollars in the bank. So, although we are showing some loss on these reports, we are still maintaining well above what we had this time last year.
That's great.
So, last, this time last year, I believe we were down to what, two or three thousand dollars?
It was critical.
Yes, it was very critical.
Really getting hard to turn.
So, we, we have, we are maintaining that, yes, ma'am.
But once again, we appreciate you kind of giving the board a regular report. And we commend you on the turnaround that's happened there in Saltville. We know it's taken a lot of dedication and hard work.
Well, thank you.
And we commend you.
I will mention, and I don't know how you guys feel about it, but I was told by someone, I remember last week, that the communication between the town, us in the town and us and the Board of Supervisors has improved over the last year and a half. And they commend us on that, and I commend you guys on that also, because you guys are communicating with us as well as we are communicating with you guys. And we appreciate you guys.
I think that's where we see progress, when we all communicate more toward the top dog.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you once again. Oscar, do you remember this? Do you have anything to say?
Yes, I do. This thing's getting. I apologize if I hadn't been able to get to some of the board meetings. I am a board member. Had a lot of stuff going on here lately in pacemakers and everything, you know, blood pressures, but family issues. But I will improve and I'll be at the next. I miss them. I miss them.
We miss you too, Christa.
We have a good time.
Yes, we do.
And we get a lot done.
We have.
I'll always be proud of these guys. Always.
Well, thank you. If there's nothing else, I'll turn it over to you guys.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks for all the hard work you're doing. Okay, next on the agenda is the Resolution of Appreciation for Ron Tomlinson. Charlie, I know you're on that board, or Sean, who has, who wants the honor of?
Well, I think we have a.
In case you can see, we have reversed it. And Ron is here tonight, and we appreciate you being here. And we have some of the board members from tourism here also. But we have passed a Smith County Board of Supervisors, a resolution in recognition of Ron Tomlinson's upon his retirement as Smith County Director of Tourism. Whereas Ron Tomlinson served as the Cabin Tree Plant Manager for Merreland Industries, helping recruit, build, and grow two facilities in Smith County. And whereas following retirement from Merreland, Ron Tomlinson stepped back into the woodwork force to help Smith County as the first director of tourism, a part-time role with a full-time commitment to build tourism as a vital industry in Smith County. And whereas Ron Tomlinson was instrumental in many tourist, in tourism initiatives, including the Fly Fishing Trail and the annual Trout Unlimited Fishing Event, Smith County's present at national and regional travel shows, the ongoing operation of Smith County Visitor Center at the Bond House. And whereas Ron Tomlinson's crowning achievement is the development, promotion, and growth of the Back of the Dragon and the new Walker Mountain Overlook, where he secured over eight hundred thousand in grant funding and land rights to build a unique addition to help propel this attraction to national attention. And whereas Ron Tomlinson is an avid golfer, traveler, and a West Virginia mountaineer, now therefore be it resolved for the Board of Supervisors of Smith County, Virginia, that we hereby express our most sincere appreciation for the leadership provided by Ron Tomlinson through his town's hard work, stewardship, skill, and love of our town and county, and wish him well in his retirement, adopted this eighth day of December, twenty twenty. And we have a flag here.
The signed version. I bet you want to do the, the motion second.
I, I made the mission that we approve this resolution wholeheartedly.
I'll second it.
We need to roll call very again.
I'll take care of it. Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgeon?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Dr. Rabin?
Yes.
Ms. Wyatt?
Yes.
Ms. Deam?
Yes.
Mr. Call? I don't know if we can get too close, but you want to come up and? Do you want the, the rest of the board, the other board members and all the tourism board?
Would hurt.
I think that would be great.
Jim, Mayor, Trish. And this, this to me doesn't say near as much as what Ron has done for tourism in the county, but we, we can't begin to say it all. We thank you. Mayor? There she's with a pitcher. Thank you. Ron, thank you.
Charles, uh. I would have, well, excuse me, I'll get there. I would never have, have expected this. I came here forty-three years ago as a thirty-four-year-old young man. And the whole, the whole reason I got here was one of the greatest entrepreneurs ever in America, Oracle Merrelat, hired me to, to build a world-class plant somewhere in the eastern United States. And I looked at over fifty buildings throughout the eastern United States, from east of the Mississippi, about a hundred sites. And it came down to one thing. It came down to the people of Smith County. But the big part of it had to do with the Board of Supervisors. At that time, in nineteen seventy-seven, Marvin Perry was the, was the county, he was the chairman of the Board of Supervisors at one time, but he was the county administrator. And you will not believe the cooperation that we had from not only Marvin, but all the board members, all the board at that time. The only reason I say this is that I can only tell you, it makes a difference. Your, this board can make a real difference in bringing the county, county out of its doldrums of growth that we, we saw back in the, in the late seventies and eighties and nineties. And it, and I cannot begin to tell you how important it is for that. Now, why am I saying that? After we built the first plant, there was a need for a second plant. Mr. Merrelat and I talked about it. He said, "What do you think, Ron?" I said, "Well, what do you think?" He said, "Those people are great. If you want to do it in Smith County, you want to do it in Smith County." Only because the county, everybody in the county, the town of Marion, all the towns, and, and, and the Board of Supervisors worked so diligently with, with me throughout that period before we ever built the second plant. It was no question we were going to do it. So, my only point, even, even in saying this, is just to tell you, you can really make a difference. When you're looking at a prospect, working with a prospect, it's amazing what you can do. Marvin Perry was absolutely awesome. And in that first ten years of being at Merrelat, I would say Marvin Perry was in my office at least once and maybe twice a month. And the reason he was there is to, "What can I do for you? How can I help you?" So, all I'm just trying to say to you, I hope that as you go forward now, you'll, you'll really work together, work together with the towns. I mean, because, you know, the towns are, you know, they're, you know, they're really interested in working together. And I, and I, and I can't tell you how important that is. It's just like the tourism initiative. When I became the chairman of the tourism center, the director, there wasn't enough money for me to do anything. The budget at that time was so limited, I didn't have, there wasn't, there wasn't a lot I could do. But what I said to said, I said, "Ron, what are you going to do?" So, what do I do? I go to Abington, I go to Whiffle, I go to Grayson County. And I say, "Here's some things we could do together, because tourism is regional. It's not just Marion or Chill Hallie or Saltville. It's Smith County, Abington, Grayson County, and Abington." So, what do we do? We, we work together. We started getting grants together because the grant program is a, is a three, is a three-team program. It's, it's together. And through that with our, by, by doing that, we were able to get grants, we were able to get money. Consequently, consequently, we were able to, to do brochures. We were able to go to all the shows throughout the country and put Smith County on the map. People began to know about Smith County. But we, I could have never done it by myself. And I could have never done it without the mayor, Jim Kelly. And now we've got a new board member, I see, that's another, Trish, Charles. They were so supportive of me and, and what I was trying to accomplish through all the togetherness of four counties. So, consequently, why did I do this for ten years? I didn't plan to do this. But we started to make things happen, and I just wanted to continue to see if we couldn't build upon this. And with your support, with your support through all of this, it, it, it allowed, it allowed me to make this happen and to make this a great tourism initiative. And as somebody mentioned, in this, in, in the resolution, the overlook. Yeah, I, I spent six years, I spent six years going to the, to the VDOT six-year planning things to, to convince them that this was a, a spot in Smith County that was beautiful and would draw a lot of people and be a big thing for motorcycle initiatives. And finally, one day, the commissioner, Kirk Patrick, came around and he said, "What are you doing back here again?" I said, "You know why I'm here." He said, "I think we can make this happen." And so, Mr. Kirk Patrick had the Bristol people come. We had a meeting in this room. And he said, "Here's what we can do. VDOT will do eighty, and you'll have to get your other twenty." So, the other twenty, we went to the tobacco commission. So, we got something, something like nine hundred and some thousand dollars. But my most important thing to all of you is to say, what a journey. Forty, forty-three years that I was here and, and one of the, and one of the great things about the forty-three years is guys like my former, I call him Coach. and one of the, and one of the great things about the forty-three years is guys like my former, I call him Coach all the time. That's true. He coached my children. And, and my son today talks about you. So all three of my sons got a great education. They're all in high executive levels. They wouldn't be there, they'd have got a good education in Smith County. So it was a great place to come to, place to stay, place to take my journey. And I love Smith County. And I can't forget to tell you what an honor. And thank you. I know I get emotional, but when you get to this point in your life and something like this happens to you, it means so much. Thank you all. Thank you all so much. This guy over here, God, he's taking my, he's taking my son's wedding. And, uh, you know, just how many people, how many people that, and I, that I've been associated with in this county? And, uh, thank you all.
Thank you.
Mr. Thomas.
And appreciate what you've done for me and I'll, I'll touch eighty this year, but if I can help you, if there's anything I can do that might age you in any way, I'll be more than happy to. And God bless all of you.
Mr. Thomas. On behalf of the board, it is our honor and privilege to acknowledge you.
I can't hear you with the mask on.
And the contribution that you've made to this county throughout the years, not only in private industry, but also your time as, as tourism director. Uh, we certainly, I think most of us realize how important tourism is to this community and how much we have to offer. And thank you for taking years that you could have been at leisure to promote that and make growth here. And I hope that we will continue the, the groundwork that you have laid for that. We really hate to see you leave this area. We'd like to keep you here. But again, thank you and you're, you've been such a wonderful asset to us.
I can't tell you how much I appreciate it and, and I told Charlie that, that anything I could do to aid and the next person coming along, I'll be more than, more than happy, more than happy to do that for now. As I told him, I, I think it's time. I'm going to spend the winter somewhere else.
Well, I, I don't blame you. Today's cold weather, but I'm sure Charlie will be keeping in touch with you.
I am going to protect the Christmas. I'm going to go with the rest of them.
Well, we certainly wish you well, and we hope you'll come back often and visit.
Thank you. Thank all, thank all of y'all. Thank y'all so much. Appreciate it.
Next on the agenda is the audit presentation for, at the period ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty. And we have Emily Byers with Robinson Farmer Cox.
Good evening. Thank you all for having me here. I hope that you can hear me okay, um, with my mask on. My name is Emily Byers, and I'm the audit, um, partner in charge on your audit engagement. I thought that we would do essentially what we've done in the past. We'll go over, um, the larger handout file. I think you got a file in your board packet, and I passed one out to those of you that are here. Um, so we'll go over this at a pretty high level. There's some new faces. So I just want to make sure that everybody knows where to find information in the financial statements if they're looking for it. We'll start on page two. This is the independent auditor's report. This is essentially where we state whether we think that your financial statements are materially correct in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. You all have a clean, unmodified opinion, so that just means that we think that the numbers as presented are materially correct. So that's what you want in your audit opinion. On page five of the report are exhibits one and two. These are entity-wide financial statements. So these have a long-term focus. They incorporate the governmental activities, business-type activities, which are your water and sewer funds. And it also includes information for your component units, which is the school board, the library, and the EDA. Um, on exhibits three and five, or pages seven and nine, is your general fund financial statements. These are on the modified basis of accounting, so these are probably much closer, um, hopefully, to what you see on a month-to-month basis. These go out about sixty days from year end to record receivables and payables. Um, so there's a much more near-term focus for you all. These are probably more useful if you're looking at budgeting and things like that. It takes out the effects of all the accrual adjustments. Exhibits four and six, on pages eight and ten, are meant to be a crosswalk to show you what long-term adjustments have been posted to get from the modified accrual statements to the full accrual statements. Exhibit seven, eight, and nine, on pages eleven, twelve, and thirteen, are the proprietary fund statements, so it's your balance sheet, income statement, and statement of cash flows for the water and sewer funds. It is presented here in one column. If you're looking at budgeting, um, it may be most useful to look at the cash flow statement because here again, that takes out the effects of all the accrual adjustments and estimates that go into the balance sheet and income statement. The next section of the report starts on page fifteen. This is the notes to the financial statements. Essentially here, um, we provide some additional disclosures and information on what is making up the numbers that you see in the financial statements themselves, and then how estimates are derived and things like that. We're not going to go into too much detail with that. I'm going to jump all the way back to the back of the report. On page one thirty-four, this is what I refer to as your yellow book opinion. Here we take a look at your internal control structure and let you know if we've got any, um, any items that we identify as significant deficiencies or material weaknesses. And we also take a look at compliance in accordance with the APA specifications for county cities now. We did not have any non-compliance that was noted as part of our audit, but as part of our procedures, we did propose material audit adjustments, so we did note that as a material weakness, um, in your report. That's not an uncommon finding. I believe that the adjustments related to, um, predominantly accrued payroll and then the, the capital lease issuance that you all had during the year. On page one thirty-six.
Can I ask you a question? Let me ask you a question. I don't know. I mean, I'm just asking. I'm just anticipating.
Well, yes.
Just to explain like the material weakness, like what that was?
Um, that just means as part of our procedures, we had to propose audit adjustments to record the debt issuance and to adjust accrued payroll. So it just means that we had adjustments to the financial statements and trial balances that were large in nature. And so we're required to disclose that so that they're aware of that. It really doesn't have to do with, um, the day-to-day operations of the county. It's just getting the financial statements, um, in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles.
Okay, they, they, they prepared the financial statements, but then you found, uh, something that you need to adjust so it could reflect accurately with...
So, so what happens in, in Smith County is that the, the county prepares cash basis trial balances, and a consultant is hired to help get, um, modified and full accrual statements ready. And so there were a couple of adjustments that were not made by the consultants that we found as part of our procedures.
Okay. And how much, how much about, about how much was that just?
I would have to go back and look. The, the debt issuance was nine hundred and five thousand dollars. Um, and I'm not sure what the accrued payroll was off the top of my head.
Okay, so basically it was just, they, Ron, we recorded accrued payroll. Did the, the consultants did it correctly?
Yes.
Who, who was the, can we ask who the consultant is or?
I had some questions on that also, Emily. I didn't know if you were reading some questions yet.
That's fine.
But, um, where you referenced the twenty twenty dash oh oh one note, and it, it mentions the identification material with adjustment to the financial statements that was not detected by the entity's internal controls indicates material weaknesses may exist. Um, do you want to expound on that? Also notice that there was some situations with the school board. There were some recommendations as far as some accounts and that type of thing.
Yeah.
So, um, the one thing that surprised me though is like, one of the, the funds, I'm sure that's been there for years. So why just this year is it edited in the audit?
I'm sorry, the material weakness?
There was a cafeteria fund?
That's been there for a couple of years now.
Yeah, so it wasn't mentioned in prior audits, so it surprises me.
Um, I believe it was in the comment letter for the last couple of years.
And yet it hasn't been corrected.
Right.
So I guess, I mean, that's what concerns me is these recommendations I take very seriously to management, to whomever is responsible for making sure these are corrected. And so that does concern me when it's in the audit repeatedly and it keeps coming up and it's not being addressed by staff who whomever's responsible for it. Uh, so I knew when I saw that, that's a lo- a long-going account that's been there. And yet it's still showing up in our audit again this year. But do you want to expound more on this twenty twenty dash oh oh one?
The, the twenty twenty dash oh one is the material weakness that we were discussing about the two adjustments that we found as part of our procedures to record accrued payroll and record the capital lease issuance. Um, that were just noted as part of our procedures that were not included in the trial balances as provided for audit.
Right. There is another thing, if I could get back for a minute. And we don't, we didn't get at these until just a couple of days ago. So, you know, that's kind of cold to get and to kind of like go through methodically and analyze it. But I noticed under, um, the, I guess it was for uncollected debt. And, and because we get a lot of questions from our constituents about, um, past year taxes. When we were preparing the budget in May, I got a listing from the treasurer's office. And at that time, we had approximately three, close to three million dollars showing on the books from collected taxes. And in the report, it, it estimates it at five seventy-one, nine seventy-two, which is of course greatly reduced. So is there a factor that you use to reduce that amount down? Is it considered, most of that's not going to be collectible?
Um, I'm sorry, which, which page are you?
Page twenty.
On page twenty, that five seventy-one, nine seventy-two is actually the allowance for uncollectible taxes. So that is the amount related to the total taxes receivable that we believe for accounting purposes, it is not collectible. Usually the way that we derive that number is we take your twentieth year of real estate taxes that's outstanding and multiply it by twenty years to estimate over the course of twenty years of taxes receivable outstanding the amount that you may not collect.
But there's a big discrepancy then from what I received in the treasurer's office during the budget process of over three million dollars to what's reported in the budget, so just realistically.
Is the three million dollars the estimated uncollectible amount by the treasurer? I would say that it's just a difference in the, in the way that we are calculating the estimation. If the treasurer feels that our estimate as presented is not, um, appropriate, then we can certainly revisit that. This is the estimate as it has been collap- colla- calculated, excuse me, for you all for several years and is kind of a standard calculation.
I feel like there must be a calculator component that comes in there that revises that.
Yeah, we have, um, a fairly standard way that we calculate it. Some localities do calculate it differently. But we often take the twentieth year of real estate times twenty years, and then the fifth year of personal property times five years because that's kind of the time at which you can purge taxes, five years and twenty.
That's kind of alarming though to know that on the books we have over three million, but then realistically in the audit, it looks like it's greatly reduced.
Yeah, and we can certainly look at that with the treasurer, um, and reevaluate that estimate and see if we don't need to increase it. Um, if they truly think that there's much more that's uncollectible.
I'm sorry, did you make any reference?
No, that's okay.
To maybe address, just simply please continue.
Okay, that was all I had to, to go over the financial statements themselves. If there are any other questions, I can answer those. But I was going to move on to the smaller, the smaller handout that you guys have in front of you.
Emily, I think it...
I have a question if I can find it here.
But also, well, Charlie's looking for that. I think it would be good at a point to speak to the variances because variances are very important in analyzing a financial statement. Um, and if you, you know, I don't know if you're prepared to tonight, but for the general person who doesn't have an accounting background, well, often they really don't know how to interpret. And I think that's handy to know what areas Mike or his business is concerned with as far as variances and that type of thing. Are you, Charlie, first, let's let Charlie address his.
Yeah, mine's on page fifteen of the notes to the financial statement. We have three component units which were shown in several of the exhibits. And for the school board and economic development, we break out and show, and you can, you can look at that and sort of understand and comprehend the gist of what each of them is doing, where the money's coming from and where it's going. We also have the public library, and for some reason, I, 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 we have a few numbers, but it doesn't, doesn't begin to reflect library operations at all. Why the difference?
Um, the school board and the EDA do not issue separate reports or separate financial statements, so all of their financial statement information that would be included in a separate report is included in your financial statements so that your financial statement picture can be seen in its entirety. The library does issue a separate set of financial statements, so you should be able to get their financial statements from them. The balance sheet and income statement will agree to the information reported in your financial statements. But to see the, the details and the estimates that are in their financials, you would have to look at their separately issued financial report.
In linking a bit, I know you did that all the time, so in that, of course, in full disclosure, I had been through this thirty years as a finance person. We worked together on some audits. There was a concern last year as solvency of that entity. And had it not been for COVID, according to what information we were barely able to get, it looked to me like they would be insolvent. They would be insolvent if COVID hadn't happened by June. There would not have been money there to operate it. So I think that's, I don't know if that's included. I looked in the audit for the library. But I think that's important information in moving forward is to, to different agencies, their, their own financial positions so that we can be aware of the board, you know, what the true picture is.
And their, um, their audit is complete, so you should be able to get a copy of their financial statements from them, or I can provide you with a copy if you'd like to see it.
Okay.
Um, they are more, I, I don't, I did, had not prepared to talk about the library. Um, but I do believe that their balances at the end of the year do look better. Um, I'm unsure whether that relates specifically to COVID, um, or not without looking back closer.
Otherwise, I don't think they could have continued to be here. Uh, and so, you know, in the accounting perspective, there's this thing of an ongoing entity and where that's required to be reported if there is a concern. So I'm real curious, not to get off on that, but since it is a component part of our, um, fiduciary responsibility uh, and responsible for the funding that goes there, I think we need to continue to be aware of what's happening there.
And generally speaking, they are funded pretty heavily by the localities and by, um, state and federal governments. So unless we were made aware that that funding was going to be cut, they would not, um, for audit purposes, be considered a going concern. If we were made aware that Smith County was going to drastically cut their funding, then that would be, um, considered for disclosure in their financial statements. But I'd be happy to send you a copy, um, of their, of their report if you'd like to see it.
Can we do that separately?
I'm going to tell you, I think each board member needs a copy of it. I, I really don't think this audit's complete until we see the, the library audits, and so much of the information is being portrayed over there and not shown here.
So we can address that.
Okay.
Are there any other questions for you?
Um, in the audit presentation file, I was going to start on page two. The report looks a little bit different this year than it has in the past. Page two is essentially the general fund income statement scheduled out for the last five years so that you can kind of see trends, um, and, and, you know, how revenues and expenditures have changed over the course of the years. To the far right, there's a compounded annual growth rate. Um, and there, that tries to take into account the, it smoothes the effects of any outlying revenues or expenditures to see, you know, marginally how you've grown over the years. I just had a couple of things that I thought I would mention. First, about halfway down the page is change in fund balance. You can see that fund balance went up by two point one million dollars this year. Um, so I do want to commend you all on that. Down towards, a couple of lines down, um, you can see ending unassigned balance, and you can see that over the years, that's grown from five point two million up to eleven point one million.
Emily, not to interrupt you, but usually when there's a change, you can trace it back to some type of explanation. Do you have write-off what that could have been attributed to?
So this year, the reason for the large increase in fund balance, um, general property taxes and other local taxes actually increased by, by about seven hundred and twenty-five thousand. About three hundred and fifty thousand of that related to the assessed values and the levy for property taxes during the year. Other local taxes, um, were up. Sales tax was up pretty significantly. I believe about two hundred thousand this year, um, which I was pleasantly surprised about. I thought that with the pandemic and things being kind of shut down after March, um, that that would actually swing the other way. So I was pleasantly surprised to see that sales tax and other local taxes both increased during the year. I hope that you guys are still seeing that, you know, over the course of twenty twenty-one. You did have that, um, capital issuance of nine hundred and fif, nine hundred and five thousand, I'm sorry. That's included in the other financing sources on this schedule. Of that nine hundred and five thousand, you guys had, um, set to buy a boiler and a roll-off truck. You only bought the roll-off truck before the end of the year. So you had about eight hundred and some, eight hundred and some change in cash at the end of the year that related to that capital lease. So you've got a revenue of nine hundred thousand and the offset is only a hundred and fifty thousand. So we expect that that will be spent out.
Paying interest on that, but right?
I'm not sure when your debt payment started on that.
Even though, you know, it's supposed to be for the boiler, and we got that loan, we've been holding it and paying interest.
And I would expect that that, that eight hundred thousand will come off in twenty twenty-one when you buy the boiler.
Right.
Um, so the, the.
Still, that's been about a year.
The two point one is a, is not inflated, but it is a little bit higher because of that. Because you've got that upcoming expenditure that you know you're going to be making in the next year. Um, so those two things combined help grow fund by, fund balance by about one point, um, two million dollars, one point five million dollars. I'm sorry, I'm not good at math in my head. Um, your debt service payments during the year went down by about two hundred thousand. And then recovered costs were also increased by two hundred and eighty thousand. That relates to your jail payment, um, and your refund from the jail. So all of those things combined led to an overall increase in two million. You'll notice that intergovernmental revenues increased, um, pretty significantly by about a million dollars from last year. That full million dollars is offset in expenditures though. You've re, you recognized about six hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars in CARES funding that was passed through to the school board. They bought, um, iPads and Chromebooks and things like that that were purchased before June thirtieth. And then you had an increase in, um, in welfare funds and CSA funds, which is offset in the health and welfare line. So that full intergovernmental increase that you see is offset entirely with expenditures. So that doesn't really flow down to the bottom line. One thing that I did want to mention down at the bottom of the page, we usually like to take a look at your ending unass, ending unassigned fund balance as a percentage of expenditures. And then I also want to look at your cash balances as a percentage of expenditures. When we do the expenditures, we like to include the county, the school board, and take out the contribution in between. And so your balances this year are roughly fourteen percent, your fund balance, two expenditures. And then for cash, it's twenty percent, two expenditures. So those fund balances, you might remember, um, they were roughly seven percent in twenty sixteen and they've grown to that fourteen percent level in twenty twenty, so I think that's great. Ideally, GFOA recommends that you've got two months' worth of reserves, which was about sixteen to seventeen percent. I tend to be a little bit risk averse, so I kind of prefer to have higher balances. But you guys are, are very close to hitting that GFOA mark. Um, I hope that you can sustain that over, you know, the coming months with, you know, who knows what's to come with the, with the economy and the pandemic. Generally, um, your cash balance would kind of trail similarly to that. The reason that your cash balance is so much higher in the current year is that you did receive all that CARES money in June that you have not spent. So, so that, um, cash number is a little bit higher. You see that large increase. That's because of theirs money that's still in there. The next couple of pages, just compare revenues and expenditures from five years ago to current year so that you can see where you generate revenue and where you spend money. I won't spend too much time on it. Um, I expect that next year, again, we'll see a, a large increase in intergovernmental with the CARES funding. And then on the expenditure side, I'm not sure, um, where the funding is going for that. But I would, I would expect some public safety, health and welfare, maybe community development if you're doing business grants. Um, so these charts will look very different, um, but generally speaking, they're pretty consistent, which I just always find to be interesting. On page five, we've got your long-term obligations. The only thing that, um, was really out of the course of normal business was that you, you had that capital lease of nine hundred and five thousand dollars. Otherwise, you were just making your routine debt payments in accordance with your amortization schedules throughout the year. We'll talk about pension and OPEB, which are included here on the next page. Page six. So we've got all these charts here. The amounts in the middle are what's been recognized for your pension and OPEB on page six. And you can see that if the discount rate changes one percent, um, higher or lower, that's the effect that it can have on your liability. So we just like to make sure that you're aware that those are significant estimates that are included in your financial statements. On page seven is the communication with governance letter. You all have a pretty standard letter. We go over again that your significant estimates include pension and OPEB, the allowance for doubtful accounts, which we'll take a look at, um, next year in conjunction with the treasurer, the depreciable lives of assets. If we had any trouble dealing with management, that would be disclosed here. But everybody was, um, great to work with again. Everybody kind of pivoted for us to work from afar and upload files and use a new audit tool. So we really appreciate that. We thought that went pretty well, so hopefully, um, they felt that on their end too. And then the last thing in the packet are the management recommendations. You mentioned the cafeteria account that's been in here for a couple of years. We would really, our stance is that, um, or our understanding of the code is that all treasurers, all bank accounts should be with the treasurer. So we'd like to see that moved over to the treasurer. Um, we have had some localities whose attorney has taken a different stance on that. So that may be something that maybe the attorney, um, could look into, or the treasurer and the school board, to see if we can get that moved over.
You know, Emily, years ago, I worked at many little schools, maybe you're not. And we had that same account. Yeah, that's been forty years ago.
And we recommend it once the, um, once this, once, a lot of the schools have school activity fund accounts. But if it's a consolidated account that covers all the cafeterias, we really prefer that, for that to be with the treasurer because they've got more adequate controls in place.
I thought that was noted several times, like with athletic funds and that type of thing too, right?
Well, those are maintained by the schools themselves.
But I know there's a hot sensitivity to tracking them.
Um, generally, I don't go into too much detail on the audit recommendations. Um, one thing I did want to mention, I mentioned on the proprietary funds that the water and sewer is shown in one column in your financial statements. Rural development with your AdWolf sewer issuance, um, requires that your water and sewer be shown separately. So we have done an allocation in the audit report based on revenues so that we can show those amounts separately in accordance with rural development requirements. Ideally, you all would work to get that information separated in your own, um, set of books so that when we report it, um, it's probably a little bit more accurate. It would be on individual invoices and employees and things like that. Now that being said, that is, um, quite a, quite an undertaking to go through the old data and the fixed assets and separate that out. So if we can be of help, if you guys work on that, I'd be happy to provide capital asset, um, information if you need it or be of any assistance if we can. Um, and then the only other thing I wanted to mention, you all are gonna fill out your conflict of interest forms soon. Just be sure that you do those timely and then make sure that you fill them out completely for us. Um, I think those are, those forms are pretty long and pretty confusing and sometimes questions can get overlooked. But just a reminder that those are, those are due soon.
Well, you also mentioned in your chat that someone should review the forms.
Yes.
Turned in, which might help to.
Ideally, somebody would review them. And it's not just, um, you know, the school board members, planning commission members fill out real estate disclosure forms, board of zoning and appeals, um, all the different boards. It might be good just to have somebody glance at them, certainly not to make sure that they're filled out correctly. Um, you know, verifying information, everything like that, just that all the questions have been answered. If there's any other questions, I'd be happy to go over them. I also have, as you mentioned, I know this information wasn't shared with you, um, well in advance of the presentation. My information is on the front of the presentation file. We serve the board, so we are always there to help answer questions as you go through anything. If you'd like for me to come back to, um, to answer more questions or go over anything in detail, I'd be happy to do that too.
Thank you, Emily. Do any of the boards have any questions?
Just for conflict of interest, when's it due?
I'm sorry?
The statement, when's it due?
Oh, it's due between January first and February first.
January first and February first.
We'll be getting the forms out here in the next week or two.
I think last year it came in our packet, didn't it Lisa?
I think Christie, we're already working on that.
Yeah.
Thank you all. I appreciate it.
Emily, thank you so much.
As a chairman?
Yes.
Can we take a five-minute break?
Yes. Uh, the board will be, uh, recessed for five minutes.